I'd like to call the Egypt OSHA Nation Congress to order. We're in our third special session. Today is December 2nd, 2016. The time is 10:12 a.m. and we are on day five. Congressman Mason.
Thank you. We've got you. We come, we come, we come. Almighty Father God, we come this morning to say thank you again for the privileges of life that you have given us this day. The privilege of a breath of life this morning. A privilege to sit here as decision makers, Almighty Father God. We ask for your divine guidance to take us through this morning, Almighty Father, and through this day. We are here to make decisions, Almighty Father, to discuss, to agree and to disagree. Just be with us, Almighty Father, to keep us civil and to keep us with open minds and open hearts for our people. As we get into this season, Almighty Father, many things have been brought to your attention. We petition you to look with favor upon those that are homeless, those that are incarcerated, those that are in need, those that are in grief, Almighty Father, at this time, those that are ill and those that are without food. We ask that you be with them, Almighty Father. If it is to be that we, as a Congress, can assist, allow us to make those decisions to go in that direction, Almighty Father. We want to be able to take care of our people, Almighty Father, those that work for us and those that receive our services. And wherever the money comes from, Almighty Father, we ask for an abundance of that so that we may be able to utilize that for the goodness of our people, for the betterment of our people, as we do not want any of our people to be hungry or to be lonely or to be without services, Almighty Father. We want to keep our people healthy. We ask your blessings upon us, Almighty Father, as you have blessed our ancestors. Continue to guide us, Almighty Father, in the things that we do throughout this day in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Roll call, please. Congresswoman Buffalohead.
President.
Congressman Hamilton.
Here.
Congressman Maker.
Here.
Congressman Mason.
Present.
Congressman Morris.
Here.
Congressman Shaw.
Here.
Congressman Suprenaw.
Here.
Congressman Tillman.
Here.
Congressman Walker.
Here.
Congresswoman Lightfoot. Speaker Pratt. Assistant Chief Reddorn.
Present.
Next, approval of the journal. Congressman Suprenaw.
Page three. On the super and going though. I'm not failed. Seven miles.
That's what. Congressman Maker.
I just on page four, where it stated that Congressman Maker was absent. It says Congressman has.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Doig.
Congressman Walker.
I'd like to approve the journal as amended.
Second.
Motion is made in second to approve the journal as amended. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Can you say no?
Abstained. Abstained.
Two abstentions, Congressman Morris and Congressman Mason. If the journal is approved. Next, there's reports of select committees. Are there any select committees to report? Congressman Shaw, please.
Before we get to that, Madam Speaker, if I may, would like to make a motion to place ONCR 1708, an act to revise the 2017 projected revenue on this special sessions proclamation and place it on first reading on today's agenda.
Congressman, please.
I'd like to amend that motion to place it on general order, day one of today's agenda. Second.
Second, Congressman Buffalohead. Can Congressman Shaw repeat his motion?
I want to withdraw and restate. I'd like to make a motion to place ONCR 1708, which is an act to revise the FY 2017 projected revenue on the proclamation for this agenda and to place it on general order, day one.
Seventeen eight?
ONCR.
He said A. He said A, and that's the Marine Corps Department.
Second.
Motion is made in second to, okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Can you say no? Are there any select committees to report? Congressman Walker.
I'd like to approve the journal as amended. Second.
Are there any select committees to report? Congressman Walker.
Madam Speaker, thank you for allowing me this time here to revenue the appropriations committee and to offer a report. We convened this morning and one of our agenda items discussed the revised FY 2017 projected revenue, which is contained within ONCR 1708, which my colleague just voted to place on the special session proclamation. And we had, it had not been assigned this yet, but we reviewed the information contained therein, including the figures and the line items. And our report is that it was unanimous approval for all information contained in ONCR 1708. So this is not a report on the bill. This is simply a report to my colleagues on the Congress that my committee reviewed the information and it was unanimous approval from all six members of the appropriations committee, which would include Shaw, Whitehorn, Tillman, Norris, Maker, Pratt. Thank you.
Thank you. Congressman Walker.
Rules and Ethics Committee met on.
All of us. We wrapped that yesterday. We voted on it. Okay, thank you. Reports of standing committees. Standing committees report. Then, next is introductions of bills and resolutions. Sorry, bills or resolutions introduced on this one.
Well, I, I.
We're backing up the standing committees.
I do have standing committees.
How does, how does.
Okay, sorry.
How does.
The Government Office Committee met regarding bill number ONCA 1704 and act to amend ONCA 1690, to provide supplemental appropriation to the division of executive administration in the amount of $172,637 and $44,000 specifically for the election office cost of the special election ordered by the OSHA Nation Congress and remainder in federal grant funds and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor was myself, Presiding Officer Maria Whitehorn. Final committee action do pass as a committee substitute with amendments from Buffalohead, Whitehorn, Suprenaw, Tillman, and Walker. One, we don't show one absent, but we did have one absent, Norris.
Thank you. Are there any other standing committees to report? Okay, second, in regards to bills and resolutions. Does anyone have any bills or resolutions to introduce? Seeing none, we're now on bills and resolutions on first reading. Congressman Walker.
Speaker, good morning. Good morning, members of Congress, persons of attendance and listening. Reading in, bill number ONCA 1715, an act to amend ONCA 1690 to provide supplemental appropriation to the land, commerce, and agriculture, provision in the amount of $516,990 to establish an alternate effective date.
Thank you. Point of order. The law of special sessions states that the information required to support and draft
legislation and legislate items on the call shall be filed with the clerk of Congress at least five business days before the first day of the session. I'm just surprised that information is getting read in on the fifth day of the special session. And my question is, was that information filed five days prior to the beginning of the session and we're just now getting the legislation out? Because based on what I see, that legislation was filed in yesterday. And the whole idea of the requirements of this law are so that everything gets ready and put together prior to the session so that when we show up, we're ready to legislate. So my question is, to the sponsor is, did you comply with that section, this section two B? And maybe there's something, maybe there's a reason, but did you file the information five days prior to the session? Section three says the speaker may strike any matter from the proclamation that does not comply with the statute.
Congressman Walker, the question was posed to you. Do you care to answer it, otherwise I'm going to ask legal counsel to come up and discuss this, Madam.
I'll make a brief response. I believe so. The land commerce and agriculture was on the, on the call. Whether or not all of the information was submitted five days prior, I'm not certain that. If that's the case, and I think we may be, I think that would apply as well to more than one or two other bills, Congresswoman. But it's, we're good about picking and choosing around here.
Did you come for that?
No, I'm not trying to pick and choose. I've been confused by this special session from the beginning. This is a congressional special session. And the, again, the ideals and the, and the whole reason for a special session and to have this law, it's so that we can be prepared, when the session starts, to come in and know what we're here to legislate. We've already had two instances that I know of. One pointed out by Congressman Suprenaw and the other recognized by Congresswoman Buffalohead that there's stuff that's being considered in committee that's not even on the call, not on the proclamation. And one of the reasons for that, I think, is because the legislation wasn't filed far enough in advance so we could all see, okay, this is what, this is what we're doing and this is how we're going to proceed. Because when you read the session law, you'll see, for example, that when the legislation is filed, the body can decide, hey, we know what this is all about, we don't need to go to committee on this, we can put this directly on the floor. And it talks about that. And it says that you should file your legislation far enough in advance so the body can see. What we have here now is a situation where we're in day five of a 10-day session. If we progress to 10 days with information that's getting filed today, it may or may not get out of committee in the normal course of action because theoretically you're supposed to give 48 hours notice before you even go to committee. Secondly, you might or might not get to vote on it in 10 days. Third, you definitely won't have a veto override. So we back ourselves up to the point that you're going to have to have another special session and start all over if you want to have an opportunity to get this legislation passed. The reason for this law is so that you, and you, because we've done special sessions before, well differently from this one, is we get the legislation, and this is our special session, our legislation is ready to go when we get here. And we know, hey, we can move this through, you need to talk about this one, here you had your support documentation I've given to you, we can do this and we can get it done in 10 days. I'm calling committee meetings Monday because I got legislation given to my committee in the middle of the week this, last week, and I couldn't meet the time requirements. So I'm very concerned that we are not even attempting to follow the law with respect to special session legislations. That's why I'm giving it up.
Okay. We've got some reviewing briefly, but it does state the support documentation. My understanding is the support documentation came in on November 16. Congressman Buffalohead, do you have something to add before I go ahead and, the part of the clerk, the support documentation gave in November 16?
Yeah, just that I agree with Congressman Walker. We, just seems to me, like what I've seen this session, is members saying, well, we'll add this, but we won't add this, and we'll add this, but we won't add this. I just, I don't, I don't think that's professional. I think that's a slap in the face to colleagues who may have something that they want to put into committee and have the people, the people that have been elected to vote on. And there may have been some things, and I said this a couple of days ago, that I necessarily may have voted no on, but I didn't vote no for it to be added to the proclamation. I voted yes because I think that that's proper and professional. But what I, what I'm seeing is, is depending on who submitted it, what it's about, if you don't agree with it, then we're going to keep it out and we're not going to allow it to be on the floor. I just, I don't agree with that way of thinking at all. I think it's unprofessional and it just seems like what we're doing is, is certain people and certain pieces of legislation, if you don't like it, then we're going to raise a stink about it. And we've allowed numerous other things to be added to this proclamation at the last minute. This is our special session, and if you ask me, a lot of members didn't have their ducks in a row when it came to the proclamation. Here we are, and we're here, and we should plan for a 10-day special session.
Mr. Gill, could you please, I'm sure that there are some, some of the members who would like to hear whether this was in order by what was presented to the clerk, and then we'll go for a vote from there.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of Congress, this is chief. From the documentation that the clerk has, yes, it was filed in advance of the session. So let's see, we started on 28th, on the 16th would have been plenty of time in advance of the session. I'm not sure which version of the law you were looking at.
Can I ask a question? Is there, can anyone tell me why?
Mr. Gill, on the floor, Madam Speaker.
He does. Can you?
All I can say is, you know, if an item is, the law doesn't say that it has to be removed from the proclamation. If an item is still on the proclamation at the time it's filed by a member of Congress, I don't see in this law where it would be kept out on a technicality of support documentation.
All right. I would like to, I just have a question. Can you please make a very brief? Is there a reason why this couldn't have been filed on the first day so we could have a full process and we could actually utilize the part of the law that says that the members can move a law to general order if they want to prior to the session? All legislation that complies with this act may be, must be voted on by the entire Congress. All congressional rules for processing legislation by placing same on general order rather than the speaker assigning same to a committee may be called for prior to the session. Should the Congress present the necessary signatures to place a piece of legislation on general order, it should automatically be placed on general order, day two, for amendment on the first day of session. So if we have the legislation filed prior to the session, then we could do that. And I'm just, I'm thinking, is there a reason why this is not being read in, we're foot on first reading until day five of the special session? If you tell me we didn't get around to drafting it, I'll be satisfied with that.
I can tell you what I know. I believe there was some negotiation going on between the executive branch, executive branch and the sponsor over what would and would not be included in the bill. And they finally came to an agreement and then it was drafted.
Thank you. All right. We will, now, I guess everyone understands the motion. Actually, I would like to first repeat it, please, for everyone, then we'll take a vote. There is no motion. Oh, that was just a point of order.
Can I have another point of order? Please. This is signed today to a committee. And you signed it to GOVOS?
I voted to.
And there's 48 hours notice. If we put it in Tuesday.
Monday.
Saturday, okay, Monday. The agenda, as I understand it, is called for Monday, maybe it's not. And that puts it reported out earliest on Tuesday.
Congressman Walker.
I'm just saying, you can't even, you can't even get, you can't even get to the point of voting on it.
I'm going to call on Congressman Buffalohead now.
I can add it to the call today. We only have one piece of legislation on the call for, or on the agenda for today. We can add it to the agenda today. Can we? Can we not?
There's no legislation.
No. No. So Congressman Walker would have both pieces of legislation on the GOVOS agenda today. Monday, I only have one piece of legislation on the agenda because it's quite controversial. It would be the merit and the amendments to your merit bill. So I scheduled the meeting from 5:00 to 7:00 so that employees could show up. And I would suspect, after all the controversy that we've all heard from all the employees, that it's going to take two hours. So I didn't put anything else on the agenda. I know I've gotten criticism, why do you only have one piece of legislation on your government oxygen agenda? Well, it's pretty controversial. I would imagine it's going to take two hours. So I'm happy to place this piece of legislation on today's agenda for GOVOS.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Can you do that?
So we have, there's also.
An hour notice to get ready.
Congressman Walker. You do not have the floor. Okay. I believe, according to the schedule, I think that there's also, I'm just telling you that as the GOVOS chair, or I believe there might be. Can I ask a question? Is there, can anyone tell me why?
Mr. Gill, on the floor, Madam Speaker.
He does.
All I can say is, you know, if an item's, the law doesn't say that it has to be removed from the proclamation. If an item is still on the proclamation at the time, it's filed by a member of Congress. I don't see in this law where it would be kept out on a technicality of support documentation.
All right, I would like to, I just have a question. Can you please make a very brief?
I will. Is there a reason why this couldn't have been filed on the first day so we could have a full process and we could actually utilize the part of the law that says that the members can move a law to general order if they want to prior to the session? All legislation that complies with this act may be, must be voted on by the entire Congress. All congressional rules for processing legislation by placing same on general order rather than the speaker assigning same to a committee may be called for prior to the session. Should the Congress present the necessary signatures to place a piece of legislation on general order, it should automatically be placed on general order day two for amendment on the first day of session. So if we have the legislation filed prior to session, then we could do that. And I'm just, I'm thinking, is there a reason why this is not being read in or put on first reading until day five of the special session? If you tell me you didn't get around to drafting it, I'll be sad as pie with that.
I can tell you what I know. I believe there was some negotiation going on between the executive branch, executive branch and the sponsor over what would and would not be included in the bill. And they finally came to an agreement and then it was drafted and filed.
Thank you. All right, we will now, our agenda for one of the motions. Actually, I would like to first repeat it, please, for everyone, and then we'll take a vote. All right, that was just a point of order.
But can I have another point of order? Please. This is assigned today to a committee. And you signed it to GOVOPS?
I'm going to.
And there's forty-eight hours' notice if we put it in Tuesday.
Monday.
Saturday, okay, Monday. The agenda, if I am intended to pull for Monday, maybe it's not. And that puts it reported out earliest on Tuesday.
Congresswoman Edwards?
I'm just saying, you can't even, you can't even get, you can't even get to the point of voting on it.
I'm going to call on Congresswoman Buffalo Head now to use the...
I can add it to the call today. We only have one piece of legislation on the call or on the agenda for today. We can add it to the agenda today. Can we? Can we not? No, no, we, so Congressman Walker would have both pieces of legislation on the GOVOPS agenda today. Monday, I only have one piece of legislation on the agenda because it's quite controversial. It would be the merit and the amendments to your merit bill. So I scheduled the meeting from five to seven so that employees could show up. And I would suspect, after all the controversy that we've all heard from all the employees, that it's going to take two hours. So I didn't put anything else on the agenda. I know I've gotten criticism, why do you only have one piece of legislation on your, your government ops agenda? Well, it's pretty controversial. I would imagine it's going to take two hours. So I'm happy to place this piece of legislation on today's agenda for GOVOPS.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Can you do that?
So we have, there's also...
An hour notice to get ready for...
Congresswoman Edwards, you do not have the floor.
Okay.
In some, I believe, according to the schedule, I think that there's also, I'm just telling you that as the GOVOPS chair, for, I believe there might be an opening in the day as well, but you could put some time in there because I know that you're getting stacked up with some things, so. Okay. Congresswoman Edwards? It's my understanding that the people are already put on those kind of the day's GOVOPS meeting. Is that true?
No, I didn't know that I was, I didn't know that he was filing this today. And I can tell you in all honesty, I didn't know it was coming to GOVOPS until Shannon told me ten minutes ago. So I'll answer you from my perspective, no.
That was more important to me because I, like, she told me she was going to be at a meeting today. Congresswoman Edwards?
Captain Chaos is running rampant right now. Now, yeah.
She, how is it Captain?
I was going to, I was going to ask Congresswoman Buffalo Head, after this meeting, assuming it was going to get assigned to GOVOPS, if she would add it to her agenda, knowing it was, there was only one other piece of legislation on today's agenda. I didn't, I did inform Ms. Curry this morning by text message that I intended to do that. So be prepared to be there if that were to happen. And if it was going to happen, I was going to inform her. So yes. Is that so bad? And you're acting like, Congresswoman Edwards, put your hand up over there. Again, I wish we all had a lot of just a certain amount of words to say. But you're acting like we don't go into session, we have one day sessions all the time and process two and three and four pieces of legislation. So you're acting like, oh, this is completely out of, out of the norm. It's not.
Yes. Okay, Congressman, you, you did just leave that in because we honestly cannot recall. You just went correct. And now I'm going to assign it. We honestly didn't remember. We didn't even, so now it is assigned to the GOVOPS committee. Okay. We are now on general order day one. All right, on general order day one?
Madam Speaker, can I ask a question since this is going to be on the agenda today? I'm not really even familiar with what the legislation is.
What will be on the agenda?
Apparently, this ONCA seventeen fifteen is going to be on the agenda today at a meeting that I can't attend. Can I at least ask a question about the legislation?
Can you ask the sponsor once we get through this? I don't think you'll have time to ask him.
Well, no other person, no, no member of the public even has noticed. So I was out to get an answer so the public will at least know too.
Is this, can we place on the agenda? We're on general order day one. ONCR seventeen oh eight. Congressman Shaw?
One of our...
Yes.
Day one or day two?
We have it on day one. The GOVOPS, day one. There was a motion at one point, but it didn't, you restate it.
Okay. Madam Speaker, thank you for calling on me and allowing me this time. Reading in ONCR seventeen oh eight for the first time, it's placed in proclamation just a short time ago. It's a resolution to approve or revise fiscal year two thousand seventeen annual revenue projection of the United States Nation. As you know, it was approved, the information on it was approved by unanimous six-member vote of the Appropriations Committee earlier today. And members of that committee have one representative from each of the major committees of jurisdiction within our structure. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion that there are no amendments to advance it to third reading following engrossment on today's agenda.
Seven.
By suspension of the rules.
Motion to place it on third reading on today's agenda. Seconded, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes?
Yes.
And opposed, say no? Thank you. We're now on general order day two. Were amendments made be proposed? ONCA seventeen oh eight. And Act to amend sixteen one nineteen to provide supplemental appropriation for cultural donations to the Marine Corps detachment in the amount of ten thousand dollars and to establish an alternate effective date. Are there any amendments to be proposed to this bill? I don't know why I keep looking at you. Congressman Shaw?
Madam Speaker, it appears there are no amendments to be proposed. And I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules and modify the agenda to advance ONCA seventeen oh eight to third reading following engrossment of today's agenda.
Second. Second, all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
And opposed, say no? We're now on general order day three. Were amendments are voted on in order there, we see. ONCA seventeen oh seven, Act to amend, Congresswoman Shaw?
Madam Speaker, I'd like to ask the indulgence of the Congress, I'd like to make a motion to request that ONCA seventeen oh seven be referred back to committee for further consideration.
Second. Question, Congresswoman Edwards?
Well, based on what I heard from the Appropriations Committee today and in further insubpoering about funding versus requests, there's now another five hundred thousand dollar request that was put on the call or put on the agenda today. So, and I've heard that you have committees recommended that direct assistance be prioritized. I am in favor of this so that we can, that committee can sort through these bills and tell us, if they can, where the direct assistance is in these bills and the amount. Because there's not enough money, based on what I've heard, without getting into one of these funds to fund the requests. Meaning, get into the permanent fund, get into the retained revenue fund, or get into some fund because the money in the general treasury is not sufficient. Do I, is my saying that right? Yes?
Congressman Shaw?
At the time I report, I believe it was two days ago, that at the time, there were approximately one point five million in tribal requests and legislation as filed then, and you had one point two million in available revenue in the general fund for appropriation.
So I, I am in favor of this so that we can hear what amount is actually direct assistance requests versus government operations.
Congressman Walker?
I did discuss with Congressman Shaw earlier about setting a meeting for Monday, eight thirty, to, to discuss this, if it were to pass as is. And the, the bill referenced by Congresswoman Edwards, again, the majority of that's federal funds. There are some tribal funds, but it would be reasonable for the committee to consider making that out.
And Congressman Shaw?
The committee wishes to, to consider possibly adding or modifying the amendments that are there now. Don't know if that will happen. It's possible it will come back out of committee. Exactly, in my understanding, the amendments go with it, they've already been proposed. Potentially come out the same way it went in, the same way it stands right now for day three. But with this other consideration that we, that I've discovered and shared with other members of the Health Committee, we feel like we need time to fully consider it before even thinking of trying to add it as a, as a, as a further amendment. So that's the purpose of the request.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes?
Yes.
And opposed, say no? Okay, that will go back to the Health Committee. All right, we are now... Make a recess for the purposes of Frank Roethmer? Second. Do we have, Congressman Walker?
I'm just curious. Congressman Shaw, I mean, Supernon has a, has a Commerce and Economic Development Committee immediately following session that we've had.
Is that until twelve?
Yeah, I'm way up to three. I'm trying to get through the three bell.
And then there's the one o'clock, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right, yeah. Well, good. Place on. Okay, all right. Can we reset to the whole of the chart, please?
Tell me.
Second. Not a mention, I asked for a nine, or...
I thought every...
The call for chair was... We're, we are recently...